I'm gonna call order Monday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, Board of Alderman Regular Meeting. Roll call.
Alderman Cox.
Here.
Present.
Alderman Deckard.
Here.
Alderman Rogers.
Present.
Alderman Magley.
Yeah.
All right, if everyone joins.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you folks. That moves us to special presentations, which will not be on the agenda tonight. Shari's called and told us that she wouldn't be able to make it, so that'll be rescheduled. So item four is being stripped from the agenda for tonight. That moves us to item five, open a public hearing of rezoning requests for four oh four South Jenkins that went before the Plank Joint Committee. And at this time, open up the hearing on it. If we have no one to make comments on it, I'll close the public hearing on rezoning of the request for four oh four South Jenkins. Comments from citizens at this time? Cause I'm six. We want many comments from citizens.
Did you want any discussion about the rezoning? Cause we were voting on it earlier.
Yep, it's in the packet and we can touch base on that. It's in the packet. It went before Plank's zoning. Plank's zoning recommended that we accept it, rezoning it from R one to R two. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so I missed that meeting, but that's what I was brought up to speed to understand. Landing that, you were there, I would guess. Landing that one. So the paperwork's in the documents, drawing, the lot, everything's in there. The setbacks are all kosher, it's plenty big enough for what they wanna put on it. So we will be, we can talk about it a moment before we get started on it later, but it's coming up and it's, you know, kinda pretty straightforward. Looks like this one's loading the boundaries of what a normal request would look like if we considered doing it. You have any questions, that time we can bring it up. We'll move to seven at this point. I have had, on six, though, comments from citizens. I have had two or three people come up to me that are out at the Country Club Estates and come through there, the trailer park, out where the car wash is across from private rental, about the approaches of getting on to the twenty-two or one across.
That's moved up.
Exactly, just bringing it up that I have had to, and have had to explain to several people that we can't. It's not our responsibility, nor do we wanna take the responsibility to do anything to those they don't want us to, if we do at that point. If there's, something goes wrong because of how it's prepared or how that property was taken care of on their right of way, we could be liable. So all we can do is make them aware of it. So I told several people who've asked.
And I think we've made them aware of it several times, haven't we?
We have.
I thought we had.
We have. That goes all the way back to when Michael's still here. It's hard to get everything done with him, but it'd be real easy or tempting to go out there and pack some, you know, pack some stuff in those holes, but we can't do it.
Soon as we start maintaining it.
Well, that starts to come loose and a piece of something flies up in the air and hits somebody's windshield, they wreck their car, and potentially get killed, and that's on the end, right?
You're on the wrong side. Which intersection are you talking about?
Um, all, pretty much along twenty-two from out at the, at the Country Club. I would say all the way to the city limits, basically, where there's entrances all the way, especially on the north side of the road, all the way down to the daycare, across from, you know, where the Worthlands is, that little road behind there. Just really bad shape, if you look at it, and really bad out towards the Country Club Golf Course, along where the entrances are to the trailer park and the opportunity to go back into the subdivision from there as well.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. That moves us to item seven, consent agenda. I would accept a, approve the consent agenda of A, Board of Alderman Meeting Minutes, B, Public Works and Killings Meeting Minutes, C, General Building Public Station Committee Meeting Minutes, D, Plank's Zoning Minutes, E, Collector's Report, I, Treasurer's Report, D, and F, and G, Activities Report. If anybody has anything to pull out of that, you're welcome to, otherwise I would entertain a motion to approve all at once.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Now, first and second to approve the consent agenda of A, three, G. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes? Thank you. That moves us to our action agenda. Number nine, finance, Centennial Paying Request Number Eleven. Oh, excuse me. Eight accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Totally seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-one cents.
Was there no warranty on that skid loader at all? It's got ninety-five hundred bucks. It's got less than a thousand dollars on it. I don't, I don't, I'm just asking.
I can check on Matthew.
I mean, I know it's five years old.
I would think so, but I will check.
I move that we accept accounts payable over one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for a grand total of seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-one cents.
Second. Now, first and second to accept the accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars for a total of seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-one cents. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number eight, accounts payable over twelve fifty, passes. Thank you. That moves us to our action agenda. Item nine, finance. It's a motion for a payment request number eleven, City Centennial Project Number DW two nine one three six six dash oh one. You wanna update us what that is?
Uh, this is just the work that Bartlett and West has been doing on the project since this is last month and the month before. They submitted it the date of the meeting last month, and so I told them they'd have to submit it this month. So this is phone calls, time that they've been working with Matthew, and phone calls that they've had with D and R for the, for the Lime Slaker, and then the work that they've been doing to find bids and work with D and R for the wastewater project, to finish up the basin work.
Have the shop drawings for the Lime Slaker been approved yet? Did you share, did you share the schedule with them of the Slaker project?
I did not.
We need to do that. We got a, we just got the schedule for the Slaker from Kimco, and it's somewhere, you know, end of July is when it's scheduled to, to be completed and shipped.
Of next year.
Of next year. But there's a whole schedule that talks about when approval's gonna be and the whole stage gate process of what happens when, and it's all laid out.
Are you guys with D and R approved?
I just wondered if it has events.
D and R accepted it. They're allowing us to go with the Kimco Slaker.
But it's the shop drawings. Shop drawings probably have not been, I'm sure have not been. When I looked at the schedule we got, and we'll send it to you, we'll get that scored if you all, you also have it. It, they had not been yet. They are in the schedule of when they are to be completed.
If we hear before, you know it.
Yeah.
But completed, the actual device would be?
Late July is what the schedule is.
Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three.
Twenty-four.
July of twenty-fourth.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
And that's gonna be shipped to us. Do you have installation time, which is probably?
How long?
I don't know.
Four, six months. From China.
Yeah. No, it's not.
I didn't mean that badly.
So this is for Bartlett and West, us paying them against the project management force. I don't know, man. It's what it is, but.
What are they at on the budget?
I can check on that one too. The note, we had agreed to add seventy thousand dollars to what they had, and I'm not so sure we're real on that. I can, I'll whip it up.
We gotta be getting close to complete, shouldn't we? By the time the Slaker gets here, we should be complete with the whole project.
I'm gonna guess at a later time, based on we don't go over what we've committed to them, that there's potentially gonna come a time of push come and shove of what we're gonna pay, what we're not gonna pay, of one of the active participants in a situation where we have litigation going on. That's all I'll say about it. I'm gonna say that we'll probably have a closed session at some point after we do this payment and be brought up to speed of what we should or should not be thinking about doing the four, based upon our legal counsel.
That when we have a little, we have a little power, if we have, if we get down to zero and we still owe, we lose a lot of ground.
This won't put us over with them at all. But I'm saying, we need to be probably run up to speed of what the plan is moving forward, because there is gonna be, there are gonna be, there are litigants in this thing.
It's a problem.
Right? So I mean, there's, there becomes some conflict of interest, it looks like, to me, to test at some point. So, but that would have to be told to us by our legal counsel, and that would be a closed session that we will have, and that'll probably be the next month when that happens. Because it's just the way things are going. We're trying to get, get the other side of this thing done, but mediation was done, that didn't go well. There was one group of people that did not want to participate, and that's all I'll say about it. So we'll have a closed session, I'm sure, in future talk like that. This one, this one, there's work being performed, it's owed to this point, but at what point can we draw a line in the sand, I guess, is what we probably gotta be, have legal counsel tell us.
And are you wanting to know the budget that we paid off to Bartlett and West and Water and Wastewater?
I'm gonna say the work, this work has been performed, it's been done here, in this request.
Money that's out, so.
It's documented, it's owed. We just need, we need counsel on, when do we say that the will's right up? You know, we'll see. That's what we'll have to do.
So I move that we approve payment request number eleven for project number DW two nine one three six six dash zero one.
Second. Now, first and second to approve payment request number eleven, project number DW two nine one three six six dash oh one. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Thank you. Then that moves us to B, Centennial Wastewater Treatment Reimbursement, request number fourteen, labeled as number thirteen for D and R. I'm gonna raise up the speed on that a little bit.
Well, it's the same. So Matthew and Bartlett and West were having weekly, bi-weekly phone calls to talk about the movement forward with the bids and getting all that done, so we could get someone in here to start the basin work that needs to be completed. And that's what this was being built for.
And have we, and the question was, we were, just you know, two, moving forward, it kinda goes with this, at any time I'll bring it up right now, I missed it, but in those requests, part of the reason back and forth is we don't, we didn't have enough bids to suffice for the D and R's approval at that time. So it's created another two weeks going on and carrying on and trying to figure out, would they allow us to go with what bids we had, or did we need to, and it looks like they're pushing us towards trying to?
Get more bids.
Get more bids. And honestly, the situation where we've heard from some folks that they're not, they don't have a real appetite to take on what the unknowns are in someone else's project. So we're having some challenges, and that's what I mean. So I think they're gonna make us do another one in good faith to try to get, be fair and hack, we'll make sure we get all the bids we can, and if that, at that point, I think we'll have a better leg to stand on to say, well, time's wasting, we gotta do something. But there's been, that's created some of this cost here in this, in this payment request. Fair enough to say? Yeah.
I move that we approve the wastewater reimbursement request number fourteen, and stated here, number thirteen for the D and R.
Second.
Now, the first and second to approve, request fourteen, number thirteen for the D and R. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. That moves us to legal. Bill number?
Two five one four.
I entertain a motion. Now, this is a change of compensation for city employees, it's an ordinance, bill number two five one four. You want to freshen us on that?
So this is for Evan Plank. He obtained his water certification, and according to our policy, he gets to bump up that stuff.
So I'll entertain a motion to, for a first reading of bill number two five one four by title only.
I move that bill number two five one four be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
Now, first and second for bill number two five one four, be given its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have to do a vote? Not yet, cause I'm left to vote.
An ordinance to fix the composition of certain employees of the city of Centennial, Missouri. I move that bill number two five one, two five one four be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
Now, first and second, that bill number two five one four be given its second reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, second read, please.
An ordinance to fix the compensation of certain employees of the city of Centennial, Missouri. I move that bill number two five one four be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Now, first and second, that bill number two five one four be adopted by roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, roll call, please.
Alderman Cox.
Four.
Alderman Hudson.
Four.
Alderman Deckard.
Four.
Alderman Rogers.
Four.
Alderman Magley.
Yeah. Orders number?
Three one seven zero.
Thank you. So bill number two five one four passes. That moves us to B, legal rezoning of parcel land for four four South Jenkins from R one to R two. This will be bill number two five one five. This is what we talked about earlier. The Plank's zoning recommended we do. I entertain a motion for a first reading of two five one five. I move that bill two five one five be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
Now, first and second, that bill number two five one five be given its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. I mean, all opposed? Passes. I'm not hurrying.
Message yet, didn't it?
Read it. An ordinance changing the zoning of certain land in the city of Centennial Reserve and Zone District R one to Zone District R two, and amending the zoning district map accordingly. I move that bill number two five one five be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
Now, first and second, that bill number two five one five be given its second reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Second read, please. An ordinance changing the zoning of certain land in the city of Centennial Reserve from Zone District R one to Zone District R two, and amending the zoning district map accordingly. I move that bill two five one five be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Now, first and second, that bill number two five one five be adopted by roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, roll call, please.
Alderman Cox. Alderman Hudson.
Four.
Alderman Deckard.
Four.
Alderman Rogers.
Four.
Alderman Magley.
Yeah. Bill number two five one five passes. Ordinance number three one seven. That moves us to item eleven, purchasing, the motion for the twenty twenty-three asphalt overlay bid prop, opposed. You wanna touch base with us on that a little bit?
Yes, we received two bids. We got a bid from Christensen and from Capital Paving. They came in really pretty close. Capital Paving separated out the edge milling, so it did bring them a little bit higher than than Christensen, but two hundred, two hundred thirteen thousand, ninety-eight dollars is where Christensen came in, and then the total from Capital was two hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-three cents.
Christensen's been doing our paving for the last several years, hasn't he?
Since nineteen eighty-six, I believe, was what they.
Yeah, what they were. They've been doing it a while.
And it's been, they're good, ain't they, Bill?
Is there any streets with curb gutter that we're doing that needs to be milled along the curb gutter?
Singleton will need to be milled.
So is that in Christensen's bid?
Yes.
Yeah, it's looked like, you know, for the last two or three years I've been watching it, that they, they looked over and aggregate bid, how it needs to be fixed, you know, paved or milled or paved or what the doors told them, so. So that's what that is there.
Any concerns with going with Christensen?
No, my only concern is that Matthew's gonna work with him. We would really like for them to bump it up earlier in the summer. We don't want it to be the first week of school. So that just seems to be how it kinda falls every year. So we're gonna try and work with them on the schedule, if you choose to go with them, and see if they can't get us earlier in the year related.
You don't think that'll affect the bid price though? Maybe, maybe they?
Don't think so, cause they didn't give us a date.
They always do that, don't they, in the fall? Some, some reason?
Yeah.
Well, you're moving equipment, so you move, you don't drive equipment over here and then drive two hundred dollars over here. You kinda line your jobs, your calls.
The way they's got the jobs lined up, this is where it falls, and then we usually end up the third week of August.
So if they're kinda fitting this in with other towns and other places, it might. What is that, the, what was it, huh? I mean, you can ask them.
They will, but we're gonna, we're gonna try.
You can try.
You can try.
So how much milling needs to be done?
Just Singleton. I believe. We're doing a two-inch mill on Singleton from Jefferson to Rollin.
Bill on the whole street or just along curb gutter?
Just the street.
The whole street?
Streets in here.
Yeah. Yeah, they're on page fifty-seven. I guess from fifty-seven, fifty-eight, I'm gonna look. Well, it's in, I'm looking at, at the book. I was talking to Matthew, and I don't think we're milling all the way up to the curb. Just, so we've got, what is it, twelve inches? Let's take so. I don't think we're milling that far, but just be.
You got it, you're not milling concrete.
Yeah.
You might check to see if we could use the milling ourselves.
Okay.
Since we don't have rock out there, we at least put rocks, the milling, to get to the, on the basins.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then, you know.
Well, it's, it's good material.
Yeah. It'll probably be, it'll be a good base.
It's a good base, it's a good idea.
Couple down woods for that.
I mean, it may, maybe a little more to do, I don't know.
Yeah, no concerns. Christensen is always really good to work with. Just in talking to Phil, they're always really good to work with and keeps them, the street department, in the know what's going on, where they're gonna be.
Well, I move that we approve the twenty twenty-three asphalt overlay bid for Christensen at two hundred thirteen thousand and ninety-eight dollars.
Second. The first and second to approve Christensen Brothers for the twenty twenty-three asphalt overlay, overlay project. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Thank you. Get your own business.
I did have, I meant to bring up very comments. I did have a comment. Somebody hit me up, I guess, there's a lot of roosters around town. People are hearing them. There's one over on Bruton Street.
Rooster, chickens are back.
Chickens are back.
Which street?
Bruton.
Do you know if they've contacted Sandy?
I do not know if they've contacted.
Okay.
Did you ask her about that, the roosters?
Yep.
That's Bruton. I mean. Thanks, lady. Okay, any other business? Not any new business. I will mention that the Senior Center is trying to have a fundraiser, I asked if I mentioned most of the folks, that they're trying to have a fundraiser to, it was Saturday, family night, they're gonna have burgers and curlicue french fries that organizations help them with, and it's to raise money so they can pave their, the Senior Center lot. So if you, anybody wanna help cheer that? That is this coming Saturday. I donated a hundred pounds of potatoes. I didn't really like potatoes, that's expensive. But it's okay.
And Holary will fry them up for you.
I say that, that's like, I'm not surprised if they're putting the calls for a reason. So anyway, that moves us now to me, number twelve, the mayor. A, appointments. I entertain a motion to approve reappointing Catherine Mutro, Felicia Beckman, and Suzanne Long to the library board. That's A.
Second.
Now, first and second to approve, to appoint, reappoint Catherine Mutro, Felicia Beckman, and Suzanne Long to the library board. First thing, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They stand and reappoint. That moves us to B, appointments. Appoint Reagan De Lima as a part-time firefighter. So move.
Second.
Now, first and second to appoint Reagan De Lima as a part-time firefighter. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Uh, that's out of my court now, we'll send it to item thirteen, the city district.
All right. My report is in the packet. It was a busy month, and I was off for approximately one week of it. But we got a lot done, and I'm sorry. Do you guys have any questions on anything that I have in the packet or in my report? The Meet the Machine event was a very successful event. We had a lot of people here. I know that we had over three hundred children that came through with their families. Two of our food trucks ran out of food, so we'll be adding a food truck next year when we do it. We got a lot of positive feedback, they love the community involvement. I know, I mean, you guys' opinion, I really appreciate that, and any ideas they have to throw in there, or it just, it's, it just keeps getting bigger. So it's, it's a pretty, pretty cool little project that they've taken on, and they did a really good job with it.
Please pass on to all, I know the city, everybody in the city really worked on it really hard, put a lot of effort into it, you guys in the office up front, and the other folks getting equipment cleaned up as well as while they were running, doing cleaning up and getting it up here. So it was, it was really, the police department was heavily involved, and fire department, so it was a true, complete city effort to put that on, and it was, moving it tonight has really expanded to families being able to come up to it versus just during the school day, right? So that's kinda, that's been a good change, pretty good change. Heard a lot of calls to come, so I'm sure everybody probably has it. There are a lot of calls to come, so I'm sure everybody's probably has it.
It was a good time.
Yep.
Other than standing in line for a long time for food because of the struggle.
So the thought is, is if we have too many food trucks, they don't make any money, and then we can't get them to come. So that's why we went with the number that we did this year, but yeah, we're gonna. They were shocked that they sold that much, so it was a good time.
Add one for next year, maybe two.
Do what?
Add one or two for next year.
Yeah, that's, that's the plan.
It was, it was good, and a lot of positive comments from people I was talking to, so.
Great. Something recent, I was just notified that, the end of last week, that we were selected for the twenty thousand dollar match grant with ARPA for the fire protection grant, so we can use that in the next budget year, we don't have to use it this budget year. So we can plan for, for that twenty thousand dollar expenditure next year, I'll be talking to Denny about that and how we wanna get that done for the next budget year.
We could stay ahead on our equipment.
Yep.
Where were we at with other of the money that you submitted, have we heard anything?
Yeah.
Any ideas of whether they're gonna do anything?
So when they, you're talking about the Boone County ARPA money. So when this, when they first started it out, they told us that they would release whom they're going to award the money to at the end of June. So I'm pretty sure they're gonna wait until the end of June. So we might hear the first of July, or we could hear the very last week of June, I'm not sure, but I haven't, they haven't sent anything out.
Yeah, I've been asked by a couple of folks, and just wanted. I thought I'd be the answer, but I wanted to ask you. They've got like seven applications, you don't forget them.
Yeah, it's like two point seven million dollars projects, so I'm hoping we get some of it at least.
Park has a lot of money in it.
Yeah, Park will have a lot of money too, too.
Yep. As soon as I hear something, I'll, I'll let her know.
Anything else for? Let me hear, or we'll turn. Okay. Sid Turner was out, she had surgery last week, it went well, and was available by phone tonight, just so everybody knows. She's working on, and they're working in conjunction, they're trying to keep the things moving towards the bid process of everything. A lot of stuff going on, plus the legal, the legal may actually have a role, so, not going on there behind the scenes, but it's slow. Because of this and that, and you gotta get all these people together, it's kind of slow, so. Uh, city clerk?
Things have been really helping in our office. Y'all know that Phyllis is planning to retire the end of July, July twenty-eighth of the year last day. So we are busy taking applications for her position, received a lot, a lot of applications. Moved it down to some really good candidates, and we conducted interviews last week, today, we'll be hoping to take a decision in the next couple of days. Pretty excited about that. The other physician is still open, we just posted that for our part-time scanning clerk, customer service rep. So still taking applications for that, and again, Stephanie plans to leave initially the first of August, now it'll be a little bit later into August. So she'll kind of work a little bit to get us through the first couple of weeks, we're missing some staff, so. Still taking application for that, and we'll be working on filling that position. And in contact with ways keepers, the audit is scheduled to start July third, which is right around the corner, so starting to get them. Mountain of people work and documentation that they requested, the process takes several weeks, and then into July. The Myrma, no, sorry, MML Annual Conference is, I said my emails previously on this, scheduled for September tenth through thirteenth in Kansas City. And we need to be getting, the deadline for the early bird registration is coming up first of July, so if you want to attend.
Ah, I'm good.
I will certainly get you registered.
I'll see you at the.
By the end of this week or first part of next week. Working today, got some registration going, there's a little glitch on the availability of rooms at the same hotel, so hoping that will get worked out. So, Tara's planning to attend, I am, Matthew Rush is considering it. The mayor, yes, I think Sydney, so again, if you wanna see an agenda, I'd be glad to forward that to you and get you registered, so let me know. One other little piece, we have a couple of folks that annually, per ordinance, we have to, for the ethics, Missouri Ethics Commission, have to refile your personal finance disclosures. So I think this side of the room is, has done that because you were candidates, so we have a few on that side, and I can forward that information to you. You may let the link.
Yeah, if you're up for election, run for election, you fill them out anyway, but the other side.
Next year.
You'll fill out that.
You should do it every January.
Every year.
I think I did mine, my own was.
I think I'll forward you the link.
Huh?
I think you're giving yours, but I'm just reading from the lines here.
So just a reminder, and I'll get you, with you on that, but.
Oh no, that's a call, yeah, huh?
Are you laughing?
No.
Candidates have a definite deadline for in January, but then the other, we're new. The others have a little bit longer to get that in.
Anything else with city clerk or firm?
I think I did.
All right, that moves to item sixteen, has made a rise discussing the LETI training reimbursement program agreement, that is the.
So this is the example that Fulton, Chief Harlan provided to me, Fulton uses this agreement, we typed it up so it would make sense for Centralia. If you see anything, I'd like for you guys to read through it and see if you see anything in here that you would like changed. This one is for thirty-six months, I wasn't sure what term you guys would want. That basically, if they would agree to work for thirty-six months as a police officer for the city of Centralia, so it would be after they graduate, at least thirty-six months, otherwise they would be responsible for reimbursing us for some of the cost, and.
If they leave within the first year, they'd be responsible for all.
Well, actually, this one breaks it down by month. If you guys would want me to do it differently than that, I definitely could, but that was the example it's given to us, so that's what I kind of kept with. But we could change it to if you're for.
Doesn't matter if we have programs, yeah.
Whatever, but that way it's, and it also says that it adds in the part of their pay. So it's not just the amount of money that we spent for them to go to LETI, it's also what we paid them to attend to LETI that they would be responsible to.
For all costs associated with the city, they've been in the program.
Correct. So it would be what we decide to, to pay them while they're in LETI and the cost of the training. Harlan had also given us, it's called the Blue.
Yeah, it's the Blue Grant.
The Blue Grant, but they, the state of Missouri has a certain amount of money that if we were to sponsor someone to go into LETI, we could possibly be reimbursed that cost.
How many days training, or weeks?
Academy?
Yeah.
Uh.
Three months?
Three or four months, I didn't attend one here in, in Missouri, so I, I don't know officially, but I think it's three or four months.
And then I need some direction from you guys, if you're wanting us to start them off at the first level and no benefits, if we're gonna do a different grade with some benefits, we just need to get all that hashed out and what that's gonna look like.
Well, I think it's definitely something we gotta do, because we gotta get creative in, in these positions and these roles where it's hard to get people. And I think we need to have them tied to paying us back as we increase their viability and their, what they're worth to other, other companies and themselves, right? So I think this is a perfect example of what we're gonna try to be doing in the lobby. It's something we're gonna have to do in the electric department, we've gotta do it in all departments, where we're paying for somebody to become worth ten dollars more an hour than somebody else to just do it, take, pick them up. And, and, and we gotta sort of skin the game for those that we are helping get to achieve that level of better expertise, to make more money per hour. So, and, and, and competitive, right, in some of these situations, and we're seeing that twofold in the electric department, what we're seeing. That whole deal is concerning. Period. And what we're hearing and seeing, no activity and, you know, the, the transformer blew out the other day, and I was sitting there, oh, that was thirty-six hundred dollars. Not counting time and effort to, to do it versus eleven or twelve hundred eighteen months, two years ago. We'll never get that moved back, and it concerns me because revenues are not keeping pace with the costs. So I don't know, we're gonna have to figure, figure some things out to, to be competitive and have, have a lot of people, retain people. We're retained, boy, Frank. So this is probably the first step, and I was putting something out there that we're partners in their development, and they owe us back a bit of it.
Is the academy full-time?
What do you mean by that? What do you mean, like eight hours a day? Uh, yeah.
When do benefits start? Now.
They're hired.
They're hired.
Hey, Billy, where'd you get that shirt?
Harlan, do you know what Fulton does?
What do you mean?
As far as benefits go.
I don't know, I can find that out.
I thought, um.
I don't see how you have, I don't see how you can have somebody working for you on a full-time basis.
They're turned on, you know, from that.
Especially this job, even though still training, you're still gonna be wearing firearms, you're still gonna be doing defensive tactics where you, I just don't see how you'd escape that. But, I mean, maybe there's a clause in there somewhere.
I, I think because you're gonna be full-time, you have to pay as any other employee would be treating, otherwise you're treating them differently. Because we're taking them on as, on payroll, as employees, seriously, yeah. So, that's my thought, you know, I mean, and then you, you gotta figure the cost, what that is, let us know what that looks like, but.
My initial thought, just throwing it out there, is we pay them lowest starting wage. And maybe benefits for them, but maybe not their family at that front. I don't know if that would be a showstopper, but.
I would think so.
I don't, I think it's fair.
Yeah, when they start, day one, they're here, if they have to expand the family, they want under benefits, you know, we could extend it there.
Just gotta make sure that you can, can we add them at any time?
We would have to talk with Myrma and see how that.
You gotta find out about that too, right, to make sure that you.
Yeah, I'm just spitballing.
No, no, I think that's a great idea, that's a great little variable for us. I think it's, and it's something for that they're all attending within three or four months to have the whole family, if they need family insurance as well.
It's hard to absorb everything, but I think that might be a starting point, I don't know. You know, Fulton's looking at this for a few of their candidates, they've done it in.
Actually, all of the last ones.
So they've had several just recently graduated.
The, the trend is that nobody goes to the academy unless they're sponsored, which means they already have a job going in.
Well, if you ask somebody who has a background to do it, then they're gonna give up income.
Say that again.
If you ask somebody to, to change, or to come into that profession, then they're gonna give up an income to be full-time in that investment, right, to become, in their career.
Yeah, but this was a development that just happened in the last three or four years, just because of all the other stuff that's gone on.
Well, there's only people getting that place. And, yeah, it's a cost to sit in somewhere.
Forty-five hundred, five thousand.
Yeah, somewhere around, I think if you're sponsored, I think the academy gives you a break on that a little bit, or maybe if you're, you're getting grant funding, like through the program, they give you a break on it, but you just have to do a little more research on that.
I'm just gonna write it for whatever the actual tuition cost is. On salary and benefits, very. Fair enough.
Right.
So, so we'll get, see what we can do, find out about Myrma, when we could add, you know, can we do that as a, almost, because it's a big program, a probationary period, but we paid their insurance at the probationary period, then passed the academy, you know, I don't know how you could work it, or at that time the insurance coming, where can you add things? Just, you need to find those things out probably, right?
I think the other part of this was to, we're talking about trying to do a conditional offer to him, so he never goes somewhere else. Sooner than, rather than later. So I don't know what your timeframe on trying to.
That sounds like a special meeting today.
There is a, there is a bit of a.
I'll get the door of special meetings, but we, we need to have one.
We haven't had one in a little bit.
A month.
Anything?
A month, I know, I keep that one, so.
So are you gonna work on the background and see if he's ready to do it?
I mean, we don't traditionally do a background, you know, unless we're pretty certain that we're gonna offer them, and then you do a conditional offer of employment, but it doesn't sound like you wanna do that until you iron it out.
Well, it sounds like, being as we have a need, we may need to have a special meeting. So when I say that, if it needs to be done for us to have personnel potentially in the program, you know, I don't have a problem doing it, but we need to, we gotta get this stuff together.
So I'll iron out all of that.
So you guys getting the information, you need to get together for us to have, to have a special meeting, and get us the information upfront, and we can, we can have a, a special meeting.
There's been PDs who are buying out other people's contracts.
Well, we did it.
We did it, right?
We did it last year.
Do we wanna add a clause in that if you, if you agree to this, and then you, you agree to somebody buying it out, we give a little more money back? Because we lose all that hiring time and background checks and all that time.
No, perhaps I asked Sydney if that's a, is that a normal thing?
I don't know, I'm not for sure.
We normally don't do contracts like that.
Yeah. I'm not too versed in that one, that for sure.
But I mean, you do lose all that, the background checks, the time interviewing, all of that stuff. There's a cost to this.
Well, there's an ongoing process where they, you have somebody riding with them, and you bring them up to speed, and you bring them to the full version, that kind of thing, so.
We've got, we've got two examples, we've got a Columbia example, we've got a Fulton example, and I'll tell you that, I, I'm fairly confident that Columbia has invested enough time in their contracts, because they sit on desk forever, but they kind of, they've kind of through this process quite a bit in the last couple of years, so. I mean, somewhere in the middle between the, those two and one that we come up with ourselves could surely.
Can you send me back Columbia, maybe?
Would surely, you know, suffice the year.
Sure. So if you guys can get that around, get to, we can, we can put something together to do it sooner than later than a month from now.
Does anybody have any concerns with, kind of what I threw out?
Probably have to do it, it sounds like you're gonna have to do it, you're gonna hit people.
Yeah, I think it is, I have to now.
But there's, but they're agreeing that they're gonna pay exactly, they just. Well, they're signing their. Plus, plus the salary paid. While they were training, yeah. Right.
So if Myrma comes back and says they have to do all of the insurance, whatever, I'm, I'm not gonna say no just because of that, I was just throwing something out.
No, I think, I think it makes you have, have something to work for, both asking in the game, and once I get to my, whatever that is, and my family, and. No, I don't, I don't think it's crazy at all, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, so I meant to say during comments with Christensen, we did have, and I've heard this a little bit, but we actually had someone send in a question on Facebook today. I guess there's rumor going around town that the city turned down two businesses, scooters and a donut shop. We did respond back to a person we don't turn down, you know, unless they're trying to go into an area where some zone for, we don't, we're on the business of turning down, um, business licenses. So I'm just, if you guys hear that at all, if you can, just let us know.
The scooters and the donut shop?
Yeah.
Two different businesses, scooters?
That's the call.
And we had heard rumors that scooters was possibly coming to town, but no one had ever contacted us.
Coffee shop.
Yeah.
Scooters, coffee, yeah, and drinks. Down with you, yeah.
Was it together, or are they separate?
No, it would be two separate.
Scooters is not as good as booking me.
Why don't they? We, we potentially got a lash restaurant coming, but they got a sign up, we, we, we haven't had, we haven't had a, for business license.
Why don't the guy that's gonna do the donut shop, and he, he decided not to do it?
They've been in contact, they've asked, but they just haven't supplied for it yet, so. And then the other item is, has to do with the electric department, so I'm gonna speak in generalities because we're in open session, but we have not received any applications for the former position for, for the electric department. So I would like for the board to kind of think out of the box, and we're gonna have to look at what industry standards are paying, because I'm hearing that other municipalities are struggling just as hard. Because I'm hearing that other municipalities are, um, struggling just as hard as we are and they are paying way better than us and they're still struggling hard. So it's, we're really going to have to be thinking, uh, what we're gonna, what we're gonna do to try to attract.
How long do we have before a journeyman comes along, our group, before they get certified, a year?
Well, that, but, but that opens another situation, those journeymen have to be willing, willing to take the foreman's position.
Have we?
There's been discussion.
Okay, that's all you had to say.
Okay, so we, there's concern.
There's some concern on that.
For us and who the foreman's gonna ever be at this point.
Well, how long can we keep this guy on contract that we have, a year or two?
I believe in as long as we pay him bills.
There you go.
So, um...
We don't have a choice.
We don't have a choice.
Hey, I mean, you can talk all day.
Well, I'll be really honest with you, what we talked about a little bit and we'll shoot the information you're gathering, um. What we're paying for this person to be able to be the foreman, basically, as a contract laborer, is not gonna be way off of what we're gonna have to think about. Or you're not gonna come close to sniffing anybody that has the ability to keep everybody alive and safe and, and, and out at night and everything else. Uh, because I have a son-in-law that works for the city of Columbia, and I know what, I know what Boone Electric pays. And it's anywhere from forty, forty, uh, if you're a journeyman, forty-five dollars and sixty cents, I think somewhere in that neighborhood. And it's three dollars more if you work for the, uh, co-op, the, the Boone Electric Cooperative. That's what we're up against and that's forty-eight dollars or something, it's three dollars more than what they get paid. So, and we heard about another town that just hired somebody and, and, so I mean, it's, this is, we, it's crickets, we have had no applicants.
Are you putting together a wage survey of some sort so we have an idea?
We're gonna be calling around and asking what these others are, because the problem with it, like the MML wage survey that they put out is already outdated, things change so quickly right now. So, um, we're just gonna have to look and see and I'll get that information to you guys, so we can...
We, we in all municipalities are an uncharted water.
Oh, yeah.
Nobody's ever seen, we see it from our businesses, right? But it's, it's crazy, you never seen it and, and you make a, you think you get caught up and, and this is what's competitive today. And it's gone, within thirty days, it's outdated because other people want to up, get up a chess match and where does it end? I don't know, but, but it's really concerning, I made a comment earlier. The, the tax revenues are not at all going to keep pace with what, what the costs are to run a city, a municipality anywhere. And it's not just here, if you're in a municipality anywhere in the United States, it's gonna cost you a lot more money than it did eighteen months ago, two years ago, period. I don't know, people are gonna be contracting after services and everything else, it, it's, it's, it's not gonna go away, I don't think either, so. I mean, so we need to be proactive as much as we can without being reckless at all, which we won't be. So if you can give us an idea of the present state, what's gonna change in, in sixty days after that, uh, for us to have an idea of what you're thinking, what you're saying, that would be great. Cause I think we started down the road, some to do that. And I know that, um, it's been troublesome to try to figure out what we do, but we're gonna have to look to see where is it we gotta land with the reason to attract people in. What, cause we people will look and look at the workload and that kind of thing, because these guys are going at midnight on a regular scheduled shift when they're on call for the week and so forth, in other towns, I know this for a fact. And, and they have shutdown times where they, where they can de-energize company businesses, whatever it is, and that's part of the work schedule that they put in. So, um, you know, I, I, I think that you'll just have to try to figure out what, what does that look like? Um, we have a totally different workload than Columbia and other places, right? But they have more employees, but they also have a shorter, shorter, shorter system stack too as well. So, so what are we offering today?
Um, I'm gonna have to look that up, I haven't looked at that in a minute.
It's, what?
I believe it's, was it twenty-seven?
At the top, is it?
For a foreman?
Yeah.
I was thinking that was.
That's a journeyman.
Yeah, we're well below.
Oh, yeah, we're way under. That's twenty-seven dollars.
We're way under.
So you're two-twenty-one dollars below. You're two-thirds of what the, what the, you depend.
You go twenty minutes south and make a lot more money.
Well, that's well worth the drive. And, I mean, it's depending on what's important to you, right?
Yeah, at that difference it is.
Yeah. And they got loggers. And, you know, I don't know what the insurance exactly is as far as your family over there, maybe a little bit different, but they're all loggers and everything else.
If this guy decides to quit or gets sick, can we find another one pretty quick?
In PUA?
Yeah.
The PUA has two and they've been working together to make sure we're covered.
Yeah.
Are we kind of guaranteed that?
Well, and we're in a position, we have a, we have someone from, that's an ex-entree resident, grew up here, citizen, you know, and, and left for, in...
Well, that helps, we've got insight, I mean, that's, that's true.
The foreman range is twenty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents, thirty-five dollars and ninety cents at the top.
Leaving at our top with the ten bucks.
Yeah, we're ten bucks for what it's on.
Twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand.
Changes over there.
No overtime type thing.
The workload is not near comparative to the bigger, the bigger towns with the, the, the bigger pay scales, but, um, but yeah.
Twenty thousand dollars is twenty thousand dollars. If you're talking five grand, okay, that might annualize, you know, that, uh...
You know, that's, that's where you try to win, win the lottery, if somebody wants to slow down, or still be working, but doesn't wanna work as much, and it's hard, and they have responsibility. And they decide to take, take a job here, finish out four or five years, but that's like, takes a light in the mind.
That person will eventually come around, we just gotta grab, you gotta grab that person when that person's walking in.
I'm not sure, no.
Not at that, not at that.
Not what we're offered, I think we can get what we're offered.
Oh, we gotta give them benefits, benefits, what? Donuts, it's just scooter stuff.
Bookings, you're gonna take a lot of donuts.
And donuts.
Donuts are like...
We've been doing business today, we're giving free donuts for a year.
I'm glad you brought that up, it's something that's, yeah, for residents that need to discuss, I appreciate it. What do we, you wanna talk about race and what we're offered? I, I, why don't we do this, why don't we do this? Why don't we let her take a look and come back?
Yeah.
As a city administrator and, and give us a recommendation or a couple of recommendations and we can, and based upon what, right? And then lead us.
And I can try to have all this information by the time, we need to have the special meeting for Harlan.
That'd be good, that too, so we can, up the, up the, up the opening.
Right, we can get a closed session at that meeting and have some discussion and decide if we want to do it.
And, and you know, we can, and, and that way she can figure what, what it does to budget, how, I mean, the forward and how we manage it, that kind of thing, right? Because you gotta be, be balanced, you know, so.
And is there, is there a rule or guideline, how long we can use the services we've gotten now, can we use that forever? Or is there a timeline?
I don't know about forever.
Well, that's what you, can you find that out, like, what is our, our, our extended time that we can use this individual? Cause there might be a timeline, then we really, we're up the creek with all, you know.
And at some point, we want somebody who's gonna have a vision for our, our city and wants to upgrade certain areas and you won't get that with the PUA. I mean, it's wonderful.
We have this person.
Yeah, we're gonna need somebody to run and plan the department out and all that stuff.
And then we're gonna need a strong, strong assistant foreman to fill in when that individual's gone. So, I mean, we've gotta, we've gotta build a, a bunch of people that are committed and dedicated to being here, so.
And we got major capital investments in the electric department we gotta be planning for.
Right.
We've got a lot more work there, so.
And I, I believe that we should also look at the, um, the pay in the electric department as a whole.
We're gonna have to, if there's that big of a disparity, well, there's, well, there's everybody.
Correct.
Well, and we don't have any of these agreements like a lot of towns do, that, you know, once you, you know, where you get a journeyman, we're paying them, or if you're here, you're guaranteed to work in two years or whatever it may be. So, we're, that's why this is the first step with the police department's LETI program and, and this is gonna have, we're gonna have to put them all across the... If we're, if, if we're gonna add you up to compete, then they're gonna have to get in the game too, so. These roles, we're, we're have to thank for their, their further education and certifications. Callers to them, so. That being said, anything else?
I've got one thing, uh, I don't know if it needs to be brought up in here or not, but I had an individual, I'm trying to help these guys speed up on a Catholic church, they want to build a Catholic church. And it's gonna be on the site of where, it's at two oh six five oh highway one twenty-four, where their event place is, okay? And all they need from us is a sewer, that's all they need, and Matt's already talked to them a little bit. So, I don't know if they've already contacted you, but what they need is a commitment, and he's already said it's dual. Uh, they need a commitment from us that they can go on with the architects and start the planning, rather than doing a planning and zoning, and, cause they're a little bit, the next meeting's for two or three months. Is there any...
That wouldn't go through our planning and zoning, that would be in the county.
We're probably...
Well, we gotta...
We're trying to annex.
Or, I don't think they're wanting to annex.
Well, it's just a sewer line coming in and connecting where our subdivision ends at the city limits. So, it's really gonna be on us, what we, we can do.
So how are we gonna collect revenue from this?
Well...
We do have...
Matt said they put meter on it, they put meter on the, on the sewer, on, on their water usage, they put a gauge. And what water they use from, from the county is what they would pay us. And eventually we'll be annexed out there anyway, but there...
Well, that's a pretty hard one to annex, because that field going out there, it'll be hard to ever get annexed.
Well, we can find out, I mean, I don't know.
You can't annex around it probably, you know.
Well, can they, can they go through the easement?
So why, why would they?
You had to get county permission?
Why would they wanna go with our sewer versus the county doing something?
What, what'd you say, Rob?
Why would they wanna do it through the city versus...
Can we answer that because we both belong to the Catholic church?
Yes.
The diocese has said they have to be on city sewer.
Yes.
And they really want them on city water also, but...
Yeah, cause the water district can't hold, they ain't got enough water pressure.
Uh-uh.
That's what happened to them when they built the, the event place up there.
Well, and the thing of it is, is when the water district ran that new line out to Panther Ridge, part of it's on Schnar's side and part of it's on...
The other side of the road.
The other side of the road, so we're gonna have to dodge all of their lines, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a mess.
The question is, we, if we can check into the city and if it's possible, we can give them some sort of commitment, rather than waiting six months to go through our... And then eventually we'll, but the next planning and zoning is two, two months away, and they're gonna come in here, they're not gonna have any idea what to do, and eventually it's gonna come in.
I don't believe that it would go to planning.
It won't come to our planning, because it's not our jurisdiction plan.
It'll go to the county.
If they have to go to county...
Well, it's gotta come to us soon now, because they're gonna hook up to our sewer.
Our name will be red.
We do have...
Annexed, yeah.
I don't believe they can because no part of that property touches the sewer.
It's gotta be adjacent to existing city limit property.
You can annex down the road, that's what Clark did.
We don't wanna start doing that, I'll tell you what, that's over, that's over the whole county of ours there, that's...
Well, I mean, across the road, it's over there.
Other, other side of the road, you mean?
Is annexed in.
They get permission from the owner.
And the other side of the road is annexed in?
Not here.
It's not gonna be any different, us doing it, going to...
The last thing that's annexed is the subdivision out here behind the community school.
Southwest County State.
Southwest County State, that's all it's annexed in.
Being our, it's the wastewater.
Over towards the water flower, it is. Annexed all the way out on the right side.
We do have sewer customers that live outside the city limits.
We do?
Yes, that's already a precedent, we have that, and we can meter it. It's just Matthew was in the process of talking and I was told that this was not public knowledge, so. That's not public knowledge, that's why I did not involve it.
Well, they wanna know what they, if it's possible, cause then it, it scratches what they're doing. So, I mean, they're just wanting to see if they can speed this up a month or two.
Well, it would depend on what, there's a lot of circumstances here, first of all...
We don't have to solve it tonight, but I don't mean...
No, 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 but, but so...
I haven't seen a plan, I took my knowledge, Matthew has not seen a plan, but there was talk of a lift station that was gonna have to be put in, making sure that, we're, we're gonna have to see some sort of a plan, because in order to make a sewer line work that distance, there's just...
Well, I, I think, I think this is, I'm just, this individual's gonna come and talk, they're paying for everything, all they want is just to be able to hook up and then there'll be a gauge and they pay the...
They, they pay off the gallons that go through the...
We don't do anything, we just let them tie in at the corner where we're at, and all cost is on them, nothing on us, and they get permission.
Oh, I'm, I'm not, there's too many...
We just need to know if they...
I'm, I'm not against working with them, but I, but we, we, we can't start...
No, I understand, it's more of a...
Lillie-lilling around with the, how we're zoning things and incorporating people, right? I mean, they're, they're, it's probably a ten-year, you know, company, that's making it on city limit, but I have no problem working with them, I mean, I have no problem working with them. But that's what has to be worked out, who's gonna pay for them? If you don't have a lift station, who can own that, I mean, it sounds like they, that's something you gotta, I, I understand, but you gotta make sure you have that writing somewhere.
Well, here's the deal, let them put it in the next meeting anyway.
Okay.
And just be prepared a little bit, rather than, and if we can, quicker we could give them an ask, I mean, it's a Catholic church and so on.
I would like for them to submit something to us, so.
Okay, that's a good question, whether they need to submit some kind of a, they want plans.
What their plan is.
Just a proposal of what they would like to do, what, what is your project, what they wanna do?
Little guideline, okay.
What they wanna do, they're asking for this and consideration for this, we'll supply this, this will only be on us.
That feeds a lot of time.
This will be expected from the city superior.
The lift station that they're putting in, and with that Matthew being here, he may say that they, he needs something else.
Who supplies all the costs and who, that's what, they'll have that to you.
Yep.
And that'll speed things up.
They're being told by the diocese that they're gonna build, I don't, it's not a question.
They're gonna build.
They've, they've been told by the diocese, you're gonna build something.
Well, and we, we should be...
I don't know if tomorrow, not tomorrow, but they've been told.
At this point, it might be six years or ten years.
It might be four or four years before they build this church, more aware than they have the plans.
This is my text of divine intervention, but we're gonna get there, so.
Well, I'd say there's gonna be a church, huh?
We got it, no, I'm, I'm, I'm open to it, I'm just saying, we just gotta make sure...
What can we do to speed it up?
And how do we do it to where we don't leave problems for the future, right? Because we've inherited a lot of problems.
So it sounds like if we get a commitment from them saying they're gonna cover this, they're asking the city for this, if we can give them a general approval, they can at least work on the plans. So you need to know from them that information, so Matthew can say yes or no, and give us, give us a recommendation.
And so we're on the salary of school.
No, and Matt's already said it's dual, I didn't, I heard the gauge, but that makes sense, I think, if you don't buy water from us, you're not gonna be using our sewer.
They probably won't want water too.
I, we can't...
That's still...
They, they don't, they know the number, but...
We can't...
That's, that's it.
Because there are, um, specific rules and guidelines that we have to abide by and that section is governed by the District Ten, right?
Yes.
The district, so they have the rights over anything in their district, we cannot encroach on them.
Well, you...
They might be willing to give it up.
Yeah, they are, and that's an agreement that we go to them.
Then you buy out their water things all the time, cause I mean, they had to do that.
They've got a little problem with District Ten.
They've got procedure, but you get to pay.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Anytime the city takes over in here, they pay me.
Someday we'll own it.
Did you look to see who has utilities and who doesn't? For the trash?
Um, I, we, notification was sent to Danes to not pick up at that particular address.
Have all the addresses that don't have power, I mean, I'm sure there's more than one.
That's the only address I'm aware of that does not pay for water and trash. Um, we have other addresses that they still pay for trash, but there's other utilities that are not, are not.
Will they have to pay a trash fee on this? If this goes through, then trash tied in the water or so?
They're not getting water through it, it would just be sewer.
I'd say long-term it's gonna be one or two, would be my guess.
We'd have to work with District Ten.
They'd have to see how much.
They could shout out to Ten, oh, oh.
They've had to be a problem with District Ten, District Ten is probably ready to submit it.
Sorry.
Might be, he's supposed to be there, might be.
She's already got an easement and, um, that is hard easements.
Still not gonna find out there what it was gonna cost for, for, you know, when they probably put seventy, you know, on the side of the road out there, no chance for other.
Ten was under a mandate to increase Panther Ridge.
Now, here, you know, first of all, you got, we gotta buy that, they'll surprise.
Going south, but not on the north side, and that's why they don't want stemming side and can't cross.
We can always find out, I don't know, I'll find out everywhere, but I didn't work that, no, no, and if they're, well, that would.
I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, I believe.
Well, yeah, you gotta think about, what, what can say, you know, that's a whole.
They do it in the U of M town.
Oh, that's true, because, well, that, that's where you, well, sure, it's a, yeah. Paying care of, you know, the, the problem. That's what we're doing with it. Yep, two. All right, there's.
Want to do a journey?
I didn't hear a second, all favor.
Even the city limits are.
We are here. James, I got a couple of favorites.
Yeah, I'm gonna say mine.